All right, I would call to order our general board of all the regular meeting for August 2019, it's seven o'clock, and we'll start off with the roll call vote here.
Don Warman. Robert Hudson.
Here.
Terry Motley.
Here.
David Wilkins.
Present.
Don Rogers.
Present.
Landon Magley.
Now.
Okay, if we can all stand. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Public hearing of sitting, the property tax rates due by December 31st, 2019 is first on the A on the agenda.
The notice of this public hearing was posted in the Gard on August 7th. Based on the calculations that are received from the county, our tax rates are actually going to go down slightly. But if you look at the calculations, if we were to realize all of the tax revenue that we would be due in the tax year, it would be significantly more than what we have already, than what we budgeted.
Am I allowed to ask you to repeat that because I really, that kind of went over my head?
So what we budgeted is just, seems like a little bit lower for the revenues from the taxes. But, so even lowering the tax rates for property, personal property and real estate, we will still, if we were to get every bit of that money from those taxes, which we don't know why it's, because some people have delinquent taxes and it's paid out over time, sometimes it's abated. But we would still be receiving more money than what we budgeted for in the current budget.
Thank you.
You happen to know what percentage we normally give?
We're, I mean, it's usually, I don't actually, I would say it's a pretty high percentage, but I don't have an exact percentage now.
So calculations brought it down, but because of the overall activity, it'll be more.
Yeah.
Is there anything for us to do on that or just be aware of it?
No, because we have a public, public hearing.
Okay. Somebody interested in speaking about that? They're less, that's, I don't know what they'd be talking about, so, I guess. If there's nothing else, then we'll move on to consent agenda of first is minutes of the prior meetings, July 15th, 2019 and August 12th, 2019.
You can have to follow this as a group.
Okay. Okay, we'll look all of those. We've got minutes of prior meeting, public works and public utilities, general government, public safety, and planes on commission on the same. And reports, did they go in there as well?
Mm-hmm.
And reports from treasurer collectors for activity.
On page 15, that's you and the general government, public safety committee, there's a sentence, Russell said, no other comments, and at 7:45 PM. And then it stops, so I'm not too sure what.
Did you send out your microphone?
Yeah, page, so if you're looking at your patents, page 15. Some of the public hearings prepay approval for pump orders.
Oh, I think it is the public hearing ended this, closing.
Close.
We'll add that.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a first and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? If she passes. Next, the accounts payable over $1,250. One thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars equals 672,564.2 cents.
It's on page 29. For reason, we have three months to look across at one time.
Not sure, we'll have to ask Don why.
Well, have we been happy with the action?
Very much so, yes, very much so. It's, I, I don't think I heard complaint one, and once we got it running, it's perfect. It's flawless.
Excellent.
Make a motion to approve the accounts payable over $1,250 in a grand total amount of $673,564.2 cents.
Second.
I've had a first and a second to approve the accounts payable over $1,250. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, now this opens it, we got comments from the citizens, I think, have anybody?
Yep.
Okay.
I didn't get up, okay, everybody knows I'm Linda Warman, because I live at 800 Jason Court. I didn't get up last week and talk at the dog tethering thing because I didn't want to get flogged before I got out of here. The only thing I have to say about the tethering of the dogs is like Landon said, you don't bring hunting dogs in. Mr. West said the same thing. But up until 30 years ago, how many homes even had air conditioning in them? Those dogs were always outside or whatever. So anyway, that's all I gotta say about that. Dogs are supposed to be outside unless they're little bitty dogs and they need to be inside. The other thing, and I'm gonna make some people mad, and I'm sorry right up front. I know that however many months ago, we went from four and a half, four full-time and a half part, or part-time person to five full-time people to cut back overtime. And there was still 50 hours of overtime in the office, in the main office here. And to my tax dollars, as well as everybody else's tax dollars, I don't need an answer, I just want it to stop. I wanna know, I want, I mean, if there's five full-time people in there, they ought to be able to get their work done in 40 hours. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. And, buddy else?
Hi. I'm Ashley, call me a resident, but I'm free in Atlanta, I live in Vancouver. I wanted to just kind of introduce myself, since I am the one that if you have elections coming up, you would certify them too, so I wanted to let you all know if you were deciding on putting anything on the ballot, August 27th is the deadline for that. I expect that I won't be getting anything from you guys because I haven't heard anything. But on the offense that you are, please let me know. I also wanted to let everyone know, so we just purchased new voting equipment, because there probably aren't going to be too many November elections, it's not going to be out on the fly in the week, but we are planning to have it for our March presidential preference. And throughout the month of September, we're going to be putting it out for public demonstrations, so people can come and get used to it. So I wanted to let you all know, the first one we're doing is at the Centraria Public Library. It's on September 9th, and we will be there from 4 until 6:30 PM. We'll just be set up in the library, you can come in. We have a mock election setup on the equipment, so you can cast ballots, ask questions, whatever you want. And then we'll have other places throughout the rest of the month, we'll be at the zoo, we'll be at Parkade Plaza in Columbia, we'll be down in Ashland at the Southern Boone Library. And then on September 24th, which is also National Voter Registration Day, we'll be at the Columbia Public Library.
Are the new voting machines touchscreen?
They're the same format that we had, they'll all be paper ballot based. The actual touchscreen, we're replacing with a different type of touchscreen. So we've always had touchscreens that were available for federal elections that counted the ballots, as well as like allowing you to touch them. This, you put a long slip of paper ballot in it, and you do the touchscreen, and then it prints it back out, and then you feed it back into the same machine, the, all the other paper ballots go into. So now the touchscreen doesn't count anything, it just marks on a ballot for you. That's all, just wanted to say.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
That demonstration is September 9th, from 4 to 6 PM at the Centraria Public Library.
From 4 to 6:30.
6:30, thank you ma'am.
Thank you. Any other colleagues from citizens at this time? All right, before we head into the action agenda, I would ask to make a change to the agenda and that new business of appointing a part-time officer, you moved up to this point, beginning of the meeting, you go off this here.
You might send the whole thing to it, don't you?
It's interesting.
You're welcome to, you're welcome to say.
Second.
All right, so we moved a second and first and second to amend the agenda, to now have to move to new business aid of appointments. This time I would like to propose Patrick McGee Jr. as a part-time police officer for consideration of appointment as a part-time officer.
Make a motion that we approve the appointment of Patrick McGee Jr.
Do we need to amend the agenda first?
I think so.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So.
The first and the second.
Okay, the first and, so all in favor of admitting the agenda?
Aye.
Second. Aye.
All opposed? If it passes. Might be one though, I don't know where to have them. So we'll go now to appointments of Patrick McGee Jr. as a part-time police officer. My recommendation to appoint Patrick McGee Jr.
You're up.
I make a motion that we approve the marriage of Patrick McGee Jr. as a part-time officer.
Second.
Okay. This is roll call, should we? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Well, welcome. In the place of argument, I give Patrick.
Thank you.
Yes, you know, for it.
Should I, I need to see who gets up there.
I'm Patrick McGee. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the City of Centraria.
And the ordinances of the City of Centraria.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
And I will faithfully demean myself.
And the office of police officer.
And the office of police officer.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God. Congratulations?
Thank you, thank you.
All right, that moves us into the action agenda. First thing under A, we have set the property tax rate for 2019 for general revenue purposes, for maintenance and support of the library for establishing and maintaining free public parks. So, if I could, could I get? Oliver and Molly to read that for us, please. You got it, picture.
It was a fixed deal, wasn't it?
I'm gonna go left, I'm gonna go left. It's funny to go left, right?
Just ask for number 2308. She should have cheek shoot.
She does.
I do, I just wanted to.
That's fine, no, I just want to make sure.
All right. Move that bill number 2308 be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
The first and second for the first reading by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Set in the property tax rates for 2019 for general revenue purposes for maintenance and support of the library and for establishing and maintaining free public parks. Move that bill number 2308 be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second for the second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Setting the property tax rates for 2019 for general revenue purposes for maintenance and support of the library and for establishing and maintaining free public parks. Move that bill number 2308 be adopted by all votes.
There's a first and a second, Tara, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Motley?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
No.
Passes, what's the ordinance number?
3026.
Under permission and licensing, we have none, under legal. Our first one, we have approving the final plat of Darby subdivision ordinance. Mr. Wilkins, will you be willing to read?
Bill number, please.
2309.
And move the bill 2309 be given its first read by title only.
Second.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And ordinance approving the final plat of Darby subdivision located in section 15, township 51 North, range 11 West, in the City of Centraria, Boone County, Missouri, and accepting dedication of the City of Centraria, Missouri, of the utility easements and street right-of-way in said plat as a public property of the City of Centraria, Missouri. And move the bill number 2309 be given its second read by title only.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And ordinance approving the final plat of Darby subdivision located in section 15, township 51 North, range 11 West, in the City of Centraria, Boone County, Missouri, and accepting dedication to the City of Centraria, Missouri, of the utility easements and street right-of-way in said plat as a public property of the City of Centraria, Missouri. And move the bill number 2309 be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, roll call vote, please, Tara.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Passes unanimously, ordinance number?
3027.
Secondly, we have a resolution adopting and amending a formal written policy concerning regulation of utility accounts. If I get Alderman Rogers to read this, please.
2310.
2310, a resolution of the City of Centraria, Missouri, adopting and.
Did it pass the first round?
Move that bill number 2310 be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Got a first and a second for it to be read by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I was just trying to speed it up. A resolution of the City of Centraria, Missouri, adopting an amended formal written policy concerning regulations of utility accounts. Move the bill number 2310 be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Have a first and a second for it to be adopted by roll call vote, Tara, please.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Resolution number?
R-19-11.
Third, what we have under legal is adopting and, it's a, another resolution for adopting and amending a formal written policy concerning residents of water services shut-off and fees for the after-hour services for water sewer, sewer, sewer. Mr. Magley, would you please read that for us?
Bill number?
2311.
Move that bill number 2311 be given its, be given first reading by title only. Second.
Got a first and a second for it to be written by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
Bill to create a resolution titled, "Resolution of the City of Centraria, Missouri, Adopting a Formal Written Policy Concerning Residential Water Service Shut-Off and Fees for After-Hour Service for Water," et cetera. Move that bill 2311 be adopted by roll call vote. Second.
The first and the second for a resolution to adopt by roll call vote, Tara, please take a roll call vote.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Passes unanimously, resolution number?
R-19-12.
Fourth, we have adopting a formal written policy concerning mandatory payroll direct deposit for employees of the City of Centraria, resolution. Alderman Hudson, would you please read that?
Bill number, please?
2312.
Move that bill number 2312 be given its first reading by title only.
Got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
A resolution of the City of Centraria, Missouri, adopting a formal written policy concerning mandatory payroll direct deposit for employees of the City of Centraria. Move that bill number 2312 be adopted by roll call vote. Second.
Got a first and a second for the resolution to be adopted by roll call vote, Tara, please take a roll call vote.
Alderman Hudson?
You need to devote on to do that first.
We have a first and a second, yes, all in favor?
Aye.
All, all, it passes. Do we have any roll call in resolutions?
Uh-huh.
That's what we're supposed to do.
Yeah, we have a vote first to say whether it was.
We did watch, right?
We were going with a roll call vote.
I think we ought to start all over.
I think we're at a roll call, but.
We're at the roll call.
Yeah, just one time, yeah, okay. So, roll call vote, Tara.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Yeah.
Passes unanimously, resolution number?
R-19-13.
All right, we have ordinance as number five, re-adopting section 2, 7, 2, 8 of the Centraria City Code concerning procedures for certain city officials and employees to disclose certain financial and other interests and matters affecting the City of Centraria, Missouri.
This is, if you don't mind, this is something that we have to adopt every two years for the Ethics Commission. And so we have to re-adopt it and then send them a copy.
Stuff we have to submit when we.
Right, right, it's financial disclosures for, you know, and then people, employees of the city.
Ross, honorable Mr. Wilkins, would you read that for us? I love you, boys.
I move the bill number 2313 to be given its first read by title only.
Second.
Got a first and a second for it to be read by title only, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And ordinance to re-adopt section 2-7 and section 2-8 of the Centraria City Code concerning procedures for certain city officials and employees to disclose certain financial and other interests in matters affecting the City of Centraria, Missouri. And move the bill number 2313 be given its second read by title only.
Second.
Got a first and a second to read by title only, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, passes.
And ordinance to re-adopt section 2-7 and section 2-8 of the Centraria City Code concerning procedures for certain city officials and employees to disclose certain financial and other interests in matters affecting the City of Centraria, Missouri. And move the bill number 2313 be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, roll call vote, please, Tara.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Passes unanimously, ordinance number?
3028.
Now we're purchasing. And, uh. This is an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into contract with J.T. Holman Construction, Excavating Living Life Building Company for demolition of two commercial structures. Everybody had a chance to see the bid, I would say bids, we asked, this entity's done a lot of these grant demolations, demolations, and they've done very well, and, so.
And we did, knowing that we had this meet, we had the bid opening last Thursday, we had this meeting, we asked the grant administrator if there's any way they could do a quick turnaround because CDBG does have to approve or clear the contractor first, and they did turn it around and get it back to us. So you guys have that letter in your packet as well. So they have been cleared for the project by CDBG. And if we get this approved now, we already have a pre-construction and a contract signing meeting set for September 3rd with the contractor and then there is a ritual meeting.
Really?
And the bid came in at $78,000 total, 70 for the city's building and 8,000 for Stowers building.
And that includes both, two sites, right?
Yeah.
Could you repeat that, 78,000 and?
78,000 is total, so 70,000 is for the city's building, and then the narrative building, and then 8,000 is for the Stowers property.
And then they've had a, they have an engineer do a pre, pre-estimate, and it was like, I think, 130-some thousand or whatever, and the second bidder came in, it was.
117.
Yeah, 117, so I mean, it was, it was pretty close to what that bid would have been, 132 is what they had, so, just so you know.
So at this time, there won't be any more blitzes or inspections or anything that can hamper this, right? Little blitz, blitz-a-go.
I wish you wouldn't say things like that aloud.
I think lady will sick of me, lady, so.
I think they're, they're ready.
And the contract signing is September 3rd?
Yeah, here, City Hall, I believe 1 o'clock, I'll let you know.
So, I'm asking for authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with J.T. Holman Construction Excavating for demolition of two commercial structures. Would you be willing to read that for us, sir, Mr. Hudson, please?
Yes, I will. Bill number, please.
2314.
Move that bill number 2314 be given its first reading by title only. Second.
The first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Centraria, Missouri, to execute a contract with J.T. Holman General Construction and Excavating LLC of Macon, Missouri, for demolition of two dilapidated commercial structures within the city, within the Centraria city limits. Move that bill number 2314 be given its second reading by title only. Second.
Third motion, a second, for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Centraria, Missouri, to execute a contract with J.T. Holman General Construction and Excavating LLC of Macon, Missouri, for demolition, demolition of two dilapidated commercial structures within the Centraria city limits. Move the bill number 2314 be adopted by roll call vote.
There's a motion, a second, roll call vote, please, Tara.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Motion passes, ordinance number?
3029.
Thank you. Now we're on to approving the best bid for wire for the electric department.
Looks like the best first work for it, but is from Arkansas, Missouri.
I did use them before.
Mm-hmm.
In the commotion, we approved the uh, bid from the electric cooperative of Arkansas, total well, that's a. Uh, one dollar sixty-five cents a foot.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. First is from Arkansas.
Oh, Richard.
Richard Crawford of Arkansas, all in favor?
Aye.
All those, passes. Alright, next we have approve the best bid for the pole mount transformer for the electric department.
Solomon's cheaper. It's more expensive on Solomon's, he probably.
They don't total up, or they don't own this one, so.
Solomon's thirty-five, seventy-five. For total of four pieces.
I'm not sure. Clear what's left, I don't hear it.
The unit ours, thirty-five eighty.
Yeah.
So Solomon's cheaper by five dollars. So I move, we uh, approve the quote from Solomon for the uh, pole mount transformers for the electric department.
Second.
Have a first and a second to purchase from Solomon Corporation, the uh, pole mount transformers, all in favor?
Aye.
All those, motion passes. We're approving the best bid uh, for replacement heater coal uh, for the police department. Two bids, I believe Stevens and uh, Hancock. Um, I would say that we wouldn't know, there's a difference in price of about forty bucks. Uh, one's twenty-four sixty-seven, the other's two thousand and forty-three. Goodman is the unit that they're quoting at Hancock, uh, although we had trouble with all of Hancock's work, and they could've done fine, uh, but the other's a little chair. So I think there's a difference in what you buy potentially, but, you know, I'm not an expert, but um, just something I think we should consider. A thought.
What's the name of the other?
Goodman.
Goodman.
I checked the, I looked at some customer satisfaction, they're rating probably three-star versus four-star is probably what the difference would be.
The Goodman.
We did look versus the little, it's been four-star.
I had to go Goodman to fit in my space.
Yeah, they.
For high efficiency in my house, because they were one of the few that had a narrow side.
I think that's kind of their niche, I think they have some special type units that fit.
But Lennox is, I mean, it's what I had when we bought the house.
Sure.
Everything I read Lennox was higher, and I would've gotten something other than Goodman if I could've found something that would fit. Uh, no issues with either of their work, I thought both of them do work at our house, so.
You might have the dates on the quote, it would take us a little while with the quote from Hancock. A little longer than Stevens.
Well, I think there's something to be said for getting um, a higher quality product out of it, because price is invested.
And it's, and it's still under budget.
Well, I think it's a better brand, and probably would give us some of that.
I rate it longevity.
The uh, the current AC unit also.
Well, we get apples, I mean, getting the same thing from both of them, we're not, are we? Two different brands.
It's two different brands.
Just two different brands, as far as the title, you know.
I mean, as far as the service, because, I mean, we're getting the same coil and everything.
But if you get down to it, you talk, somebody's had to talk shop local, they both do good work, they do work in town, I've had business with both, one, one has payroll that's, that's in, they're in Centaria, Stevens is in Centaria, um, the others outside of Centaria, so I'll just, I'll bring that up, just for your consideration.
Don't you have to go with the cheapest bid?
Don't have to.
Don't have to.
From my research, and I'm not an expert, this is research when I bought my house and had to buy an AC unit, Lennox is a better brand.
You've had both, is what you're saying, right?
Well, I had an old Lennox, we bought the house. It had to be replaced, it was well past its uh, lifespan.
Well, they were backed by both of these installers, and they're both pretty reliable.
And to me, it comes down to, do we want to spend four hundred dollars more for a Lennox than a Goodman?
Pretty much, it's kind of like, yeah.
That's what it was, that's what I think.
Yeah.
That's it all.
If it was my house, I probably would. As a senior, I, I would personally. In the commotion, we approved the quote from Stevens, Grandville, a few thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
What's the warranty on them, are they all the boat, same warranty? One guy better warranty than the other?
If I'm not mistaken, Lennox is a five, but I don't know what's good, good, I haven't heard of it.
We didn't get that part of it, I mean.
Orders, I know that. I didn't, I didn't get that from either one.
This isn't much money for this, for this anyway, I mean, it could be a lot higher. Second.
I have a first and a second to purchase uh, for Stevens heating cooling, the uh, coil unit for the fire, for the fire, for the police department, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All those, passes, we're purchasing Stevens.
Pardon me, sir, is Stevens supplying Lennox or Goodman?
The Lennox, the Lennox, yes. Now, old business, uh, you have the old business, frame up? Any frame? There's a little bit of Officer Patrick McGee Jr., uh, this administrator.
My reports in the packet, if you have questions, I'll know.
I see you attended the website training, how has the launch?
Um, it, it's good, there are some things that we're going to have to tweak along the way, but we were able to do some additional training with Andrea, and as we go along and we're training other people, we can learn more things.
Do you have someone that you've decided is kind of the responsible person for content?
We, um, inside City Hall, that will be probably mainly Terry for content, she adds things as well, she adds events, uh, Phyllis is the one that always uploads to meetings, so she'll handle most of the meetings, and then we have uh, office, or Lieutenant Cribbs is, he is um, our first officer of the police department, and we went over today how to add micro, uh, add to the micro sites and, and add things to your menu, so we've already added a couple of things, and we're gonna add more to that. We went here with the Parks Department, and Andrea Owens is our contact there, and then um, our utility department said for us to just take care of it, so.
Friday was real hard to get on to.
It was, I think they were converting, and well, if you were trying to pay Friday, was it Friday, Thursday, or Friday?
CUSI updated our payment portal the same day that we updated the website, so it was a little bit of a mess.
Oh, I wouldn't have been that far with it, but it was, it was very cumbersome, it wouldn't just go right to the stuff.
Right, and it's better today, we were on it today, looking around, and it's gonna be.
Looks like it's a little.
Um, your agendas and minutes are gonna look different, everything, um, so once we create an event for this meeting, we'll be able to go out, we'll put the agenda out there on, for that meeting, and then the packet, and be able to link the video, and it'll all be like, right there in one spot, so we don't have to go to several different places or scroll to find it.
Yeah, I saw that, like, for one event, then there were multiple links up to the side, but, but then, and it doesn't look like any of the videos have been linked, or?
Uh, probably not, yeah, but we'll work on it.
Yeah, so it looks, it's almost like you need to backfill now, the content.
Yes, we will. I think it, it looks, we think it looks nice, we went with black and white, our traditional refit, yeah, it is.
Any other discussion, you opposed, hold it? Probably go on to the city attorney inside here, so we'll do anything, I don't think.
She called us, she could not leave here tonight, she would help with.
And then that breaks the scene for.
Yeah, and Albie's coming up, September eighth through, I guess, or the month, maybe eleven, Heather and Albie, all of that, and.
I'm thinking I'm gonna go, I, I just gotta make sure I wanted to be somewhere, well, if I wanted to be in Brazil, I'll be there, a little tomorrow, unfortunately, so, so. So anyway, as mayor rise, or anything? Well, I think we did. You remember that?
Well, no, because we just got out Thursday, so, um, there is another demolition grant project that we could look into, and it's a residential, since we, um, since our current project only involves commercial, we would qualify for the residential, so, um, we've been working on with.
Totally agree.
Yeah, it would be a grant, we've been working with code enforcement to identify properties that would qualify, and we, so far we have identified twenty-two, um, so we may be asking the board's permission to look at this grant, because, I mean, if you look at our map of Centaria, we're running out of space to build, but if we have twenty-two places that we could look at, you know, we would have to get the owners on board with, um, you know, demolishing those properties, but if they would get on board with that, um, you know, potentially twenty-two more building sites in the town, so.
Are we, are we still looking at the fire protection grant that's going to be coming up September?
Oh, yes.
Still working on that?
We are, and I talked to Lincoln, and he said that they do have time to write that for us, and that's included in our, um, our membership, so they can help us.
Is that the free one, or is that the forty-five hundred?
That's the free one, unless you want to write a check for forty-five hundred, then we'll take that. That was the free. Nope, it's, yeah, I do need to tell the other company that we're not going to go.
Can I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Uh, as mayor rise, I have one quick question, um, I have a thought, I, I'm the one that's got to be, I'm playing five, five more, so, here's the deal, um, I've had, had newspaper, had, had an article, and I hadn't read it yet, but I had a couple of people ask me about an article of the SRO officer, um, it was a nice article, I read it afterwards, but uh, and somewhere through the whole chain of things, I've had people ask me, say, well, that started up being a grant, the school, through the school, through the police department, we did that, I remember, that's been a long, long time ago, and so I was unable to answer, so that's why I asked the question, for maybe the sake of us here to have the knowledge of what's going on, so, at that time, we had the grant, the grant went through, we did it, and then at some point, we and the school shared, I think, fifty-fifty, we decided as board, as a city, to do that fifty-fifty for a while, and at some point, I don't know when, so if you could help me understand, I, I'm not sure, at what point did it become wholly of, of our, our cost to share that, the school decided that they couldn't help pay for that, because I guess, there's people, and I wouldn't say me, well, maybe me, wonder if that's the case, if the school doesn't find enough value, and, and, and I'm not saying that they don't, I'm sure they'd say me, that they're bagging a resource officer, but in their budget, they're not able to split the cost of that at some point, I, I'm just curious how that came back, probably before your time, five years, okay, so I don't know, but I, I'd kind of like to know the history of that, because I've been asked by probably five or six different people, and it was just, hey, whatever happened on that, I probably was a great, I don't remember the day, but I thought that's what was back in the day, I was like, we shared the school, I was able to get that for, but that's all I can answer, so, just wanted to ask the question.
I'd say it goes back to two thousand thirteen to fourteen timeframe, maybe even a little bit later than that?
I can speak from at least two thousand and ten.
Okay.
We've had two different times where we've had two different SROs, uh, the first one was terminated by the school district.
Yeah.
Uh, and we ended up actually losing that employee.
Okay.
The second one was a fifty-fifty. Where uh, we shared the cost. We did share the cost.
Even to you.
They weren't necessarily terminated, um, she ended up leaving for other employment.
Okay, so there was an opening, and we came open?
Correct.
Okay.
And we ended up losing that employee as well.
Good.
While David Davenport is an SRO now, uh, or at least he has that title, he is still a patrol officer, uh, he is not dedicated to that school. If I need him for the road, if I need him for investigation, his primary duty falls at the Centaria Police Department, not the Centaria public schools. He's great with kids, but he's not a school district employee. Gotcha.
And let me, let me add to that just a little bit. When it was a split cost between the school district and the city, we ran a lot of issues of, hey, we need that employee for this, we need that officer for this, that officer still carrying the Centaria, it was our information, okay, he was a police officer. Well, I can't, I'm wrapped up with whatever it is. Well, I've talked to the new superintendent, just briefly, he and I had a couple conversations, and he understands that David Davenport is, he works for the city of Centaria, and his primary responsibility is whatever we tell him to do. Um, so, is it going to change in the future? I don't know, I don't know, those conversations have not been handled, okay, but having it to where Dave answers to myself and Lieutenant Cribbs is, it works for us, yeah, he spends a lot of time in schools, is it necessary? I think any of, any of you here would agree that it is, um, I mean, we can look back to last year, scare with the gun, that whole nine yards, you know, so, it's not the potential, if it can happen here, it will happen here, okay, um, and, you know, it could be just a small incident, or it could be a large incident, but the fact is, is Dave works for us, he goes through the training with us, we know what Dave's doing, we know where Dave's at, and if, and as Lieutenant Cribbs said, if we need him, we can have him, just that way, so, and we don't have to ask anybody for it, so, Isaac, is it a necessary position? Yeah, I think it is, to spend some time in there, build those relationships, it goes right along with the whole thing I've been preaching to you all ever since I started this job of community policing, it's the same thing, so.
Problem I have with the school paying any part of it, is they can decide at any time to terminate that contract.
Okay.
And.
There you are.
We have a, a season timer of the police department losing benefits, um, and he's got a family, very active in the school system, um, I, I can't take that risk, and I'm looking for the employee part.
I, this is no way, Officer Davenport, I've known forever, he was a kid, had, grew up here, you know, coast of the shores, you never take a look at, so it's, it's not that, it's, the question was asked, because it seemed to look like it was now a dedicated full-time position, and I said, I don't think it was, that's what I need to say, but I don't want to speak ignorant about it, because I was a hundred percent sure, right, so, that's probably some clarity for us to understand, because I think one of the key things that I want us to be able to do, is be able to ask, if we're asked a question, be able to know about it, or we can come educated on it, or we can talk about it, where in three or four sentences, we can explain what it is, and why it is, and what's going on, and I, I wouldn't have to do that completely, that's what I'm going to, I couldn't, I was going to say to probably other people, Terry probably, all people probably knows more than, than anybody, probably, but I just wanted to know for me, just so I can answer the question in the future.
At this point in time, he is a very valuable resource in the schools, I can't tell you how many kids will call him by name, just walking by.
Well, I, I don't think there's any doubt that the relationship's probably the most important thing you have, that, that they feel safe and comfortable talking to you, if they have an issue at home, it, it probably extends far more than that, what could happen at the school, you get some, some. Well, I don't think there's any doubt that the relationship is probably the most important thing you have, that they feel safe and comfortable talking to you, and if they have an issue at home, it probably extends far more than that, what could happen at the school, if you get some, somebody crazy, comes into the school, the chances of somebody being at the right spot at the right time, that officer being there is, we know that's like winning a lottery almost, but I think it's, the importance is, you still have somebody, we have plenty of, I think, active, we can respond, but I'm just saying, I think it's probably bigger than, it's more of a, a one-on-one personal development, or knowing the culture of the school, what's going on in the school. I think that's where you get the most benefit from that, active shooters, I think, is one thing, when somebody's crazy, they're gonna at least be not crazy enough to go somewhere where they can do some harm first, and if they're not, and they're there, I'm sure that somebody will shoot them, take advantage of the situation, and then they can control it, compromise it, so, you know, that being said, I, I think it's, I'm not saying it's not a good spot, I just wanted to ask that question, I hope that everybody here can appreciate why I asked the question, because I didn't have anybody else, have anybody asked them, I don't know if they did or not, but, uh, I didn't know, I mean, but, so, and that's why I wanted to know, so I'm good.
Is he on twelve? Dave's on twelve?
Eight.
You were saying, who's on it, you're right.
Does that call any problems, the other officer on twelve, or five, or?
It's no problem, it's no issue, it's all, they, they don't wanna do, they don't wanna be in the schools.
Just good job, good job on the gun thing, last week.
Oh, thank you.
That could have been a bad deed.
Uh, yeah.
What you all did, that you did good.
Well, like I said, the officers reacted correctly, and, like I said, it turned out to be...
Looks like we're going to meetings, all in favor?
Just a reminder, the neighborhood watch meeting is tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, neighborhood watch kickoff being East Annex, six P.M.
Alright.
We'd love to see any of y'all there, if you'd be there.
Now that I've delayed myself getting out of here, um, I would like to take a moment to adjourn.
Motion.
The first? Can I get a second? I got a second, first thing, all in favor? All opposed?